Hello, everyone. This is Bill Keegan, Town Manager in Foxborough, and I'm here for another version of the Ask Bill Keegan Show. This is a special edition to review the special town meeting warrant that will be coming up on November 15th at 7:30 PM at the Foxborough High School. Joining me today are Assistant Town Manager Mike Johns, Town Planning Director Paige Duncan, and Chief of Police Mike Grace. We're going to cover several topics today. There are a total of 13 warrant articles that we intend to cover at this time. And what we'd hope to do is provide you with more information so that when you do attend the meeting on the 15th, that you'll be better informed about the issues that are going to be acted on that evening. So, starting right off with Article 1, we're going to go to, I'm going to turn to Paige Duncan, who's going to give us a brief summary of what is proposed for a zoning bylaw amendment to include outdoor dining. Paige?
Thanks, Bill. Yes, so Article 1 on the special town meeting warrant is specifically deals with outdoor dining. You may recall that over the past two summers, we've had the benefit of outdoor dining due to COVID. And what we've learned through this COVID crisis, one of the, you know, a lot of downsides, but one of the upsides has been this outdoor dining. The state regulations that have allowed the flexibility for this outdoor dining are due to expire April 1st, 2022. So, I know a couple of members of the selectmen, planning board, and others in the community felt it important to allow this successful program to continue. So, we worked with Barney Overett, who writes a lot of our zoning articles, to come up with a bylaw, and that's what you have before you. The program, like I said, has been successful in Foxborough for the past two summers. We've had, I believe, 17 outdoor dining establishments running. In this application process, the new process, the planning board would be the review authority through site plan review. And dining would be allowed on a case-by-case basis in certain parking areas, sidewalks, and it would have to be evaluated and reviewed on a case-by-case basis from the planning board. We've had minimal issues for the past two years. In fact, we've heard a lot of positive feedback. This bylaw itself will relate primarily to private property, but it could also apply to public areas. And so, for example, to sort of clarify what that means is if you think over, say, for Conrad's. Conrad's is doing their outdoor dining, their expanded outdoor dining, not just in their covered patio, which is always permitted, but they got a larger area permitted. That was done on private property. The other example on public property is, for example, the Commons Restaurant, where we allowed folks to have some restaurants out in the alley and the sidewalk last year. So, that's the two different types of uses. Right now, the Board of Selectmen is the review authority for anything on public property, and that would remain. So, the planning board would review applications, but it would always be up to the selectmen to determine whether something's allowed on a sidewalk or a public road. This really deals primarily with private property. And I know there's been some concerns mentioned about the shortage of parking, and again, that's why case-by-case is where it matters. Obviously, if we're dealing with a site with extremely tight parking, the planning board would have to take a critical look at that. But in a lot of areas, you'll see that there is ample parking. And alternatively, I want to point out that a lot of people aren't going to necessarily just propose parking on a parking lot for the sake of it. We've had some that have done that, but most people don't want to sit in a parking lot and eat. So, what we're doing with this outdoor dining is allowing folks to predict that it'll be allowed and invest, and maybe we'll end up with some higher-quality outdoor dining than, say, you know, Jersey barriers in a parking lot. So, that basically, I think, sums that one up.
Okay. So, in this one, the advisory committee is recommending approval. And in fact, you'll see that in most of these articles, the advisory committee is recommending approval. It's one exception we'll talk about a little later on, and there's good reason for that. So, we'll get into that at the time. So, turning to Article 2, Paige is going to handle a number of these articles in a row because they are zoning-related, and there is one article, at least maybe two, that will be actually reviewed by the Chairman of the Zoning Board of Appeals, Bonnie Overett. But Paige is going to stand in and cover these for today. So, can you just get into Article 2, which is a zoning bylaw amendment regarding accessory apartments?
Yes, so this is a biggie, and we've had a lot of interest on this article. Right now, accessory apartments are allowed in Foxborough today through special permit from the planning board, and only for folks who are related to the homeowner. So, basically, you could build what we call an in-law apartment or an accessory apartment for someone who's related. But you could not, in theory, when, if that person moved out or unfortunately passed on, you would be required to remove the kitchen, remove the stove, to make it no longer an accessory apartment. Through our conversation on housing, we've been talking a lot about how to allow smaller, more naturally affordable housing units, and we all know that, you know, there's some hesitancy around large projects, apartment buildings and whatnot. So, accessory apartments are actually a low-impact way of increasing, in a very subtle way, of a housing choice. Basically, accessory apartments are small, independent, and self-contained dwelling units. They are not a duplex. You know, duplex, it means that you have two, basically standalone units. Well, they stand, they are attached, but they're two units. They can have two different ownerships. Under accessory apartment, the homeowner must live in either the primary unit or the accessory unit, and there's always going to be one unit that is subordinate to the primary. Let's see. Right now, there are 50 legally permitted accessory apartments in Foxborough. Most people wouldn't even know they were there. They blend in. Under this bylaw, all apartments have to continue to, it needs to continue to look like a single-family home. It would allow, you know, younger folks starting out to live in that unit independently. It allows seniors to maybe downside and go into the smaller unit and rent out their other unit. There's a whole myriad of options here, but what it does is increase opportunity for housing choice. We've also heard a lot of fears around too many people will do it, but we've actually, this is a major investment on property, and you're spending, especially in this day and age with COVID pricing, you're spending a lot of money. And you're also going to have a tenant next to you. So, that's a natural selection process. You know, for example, I've always said, me, in my home, I don't live in Foxborough, but I could put in an accessory apartment in my house, but I don't want to be a landlord, and I don't want someone sharing a yard. So, that's my choice, and we think that that would actually naturally occur. This isn't something you're going to see hundreds of accessory apartments sprout up. So, it's important to mention that it is, it will not be a separate structure. It is attached. It must blend in. Only one accessory unit is allowed per lot. Both ownerships must be under, both units must be under the same ownership. The accessory apartment cannot contain more than one bedroom. And then, the maximum size would be 1,100 square feet, and that's only in certain circumstances. It's actually based on the ratio of the house. So, not every accessory apartment can be 1,100, but that's the largest. And as we stressed, the owner must live on the property. So, I think that's about it. Another key thing is that the rental period is limited to 12 months, and that's in an effort to make sure that we don't end up with Airbnb and other short-term rentals. This way, we're not allowing this use to sort of be rental units like that. It would be for long-term rentals. And I think that's it. Again, through the two-year conversation on housing, there's been a need for smaller units, and not necessarily capital A affordable, but naturally according affordable. And we believe that this unit, this type of unit, will help the community, and the planning board has voted to support this article.
As has the advisory committee, they've recommended this article for approval as well. So, that covers that, and thank you for providing that level of detail for an important article for consideration for next Monday night. So, Article 3 is another zoning bylaw amendment regarding building height.
This is another, this is a housekeeping item as well. In Foxborough, when you look at our dimensional table, you'll see that it regulates the building, the size of the building by both height, you know, number of feet, and also in stories. We've learned the hard way that stories is subjective. And in fact, we've come across instances where, for example, single-family homes are out of compliance with this requirement because in Foxborough, you're limited to two and a half stories, and yet a basement in many instances is considered a story. So, we now have single-family homes that are out of compliance. Obviously, we don't worry about this, but we want to clean this mess up. So, we did some research and learned that many communities have abandoned the term "stories" because it is subjective. You can have a story that's 10 feet tall, you can have a story that's 15 feet tall. That doesn't really measure. So, we are proposing to go strictly with height and get rid of the term "stories" throughout the bylaw and just replace it with "height." That sounds a lot, like a lot, but we're actually not changing a single height number. So, while we're getting rid of stories, we're not proposing to change the height of anything. I will say that we do have an amendment that will be made at town meeting floor. I'm looking for that language right now. It has to do with, there's going to be a motion made on town meeting floor to amend this because during the public hearing process, it was identified that in certain instances, this could be a problem. So, and we have worked with a moderator on this, and this amendment will be to add the two sentences, as the second and third sentences, to read, "The height of a single-family or two-family residential structure that contains a so-called walkout basement or the like shall be measured from the mean grade of that portion of the ground that immediately joins the part of the structure that faces the street or way on which the structure has legal frontage." Period. "The height of a multifamily residential structure shall be measured in accordance with the definition of height building as set forth in these bylaws." So, again, we are not proposing to change the height, but we're just trying to clean up our bylaw to make sure that we don't have nonconformities before we even get out of the gate. And the planning board has recommended approval of this.
As has the advisory committee by unanimous vote. Okay. So, moving on to Article 4, which is the zoning bylaw amendment for brew pub definition.
Okay. So, brew pub, where did this come from? This actually came from Wormtown. They had contacted us and me, generally just seeking to discuss the possibility of allowing distilled spirits in their brew pub up at Patriot Place. And as you know, we also have a brew pub under construction uptown. We have Shovel Town Brew Pub coming, expected to open early 2022. So, after talking with the planning board, economic development folks, and around town hall, we decided that rather than having Wormtown do a citizen petition, we'd rather manage this amendment on our own on a general basis for the community. So, what we're proposing here is to amend the existing definition of brew pub to allow distilled spirits, fermented liquors, hard ciders, and the like. And again, we believe that this is the trend that brew pubs are going towards, and we want to make sure that not just Wormtown, but Shovel Town and any brew pub in this town would benefit from such a change. So, we have gone ahead and proposed this definition, and the planning board has voted to support this.
I would agree that it is definitely a trend in that direction, which needs to be looked at. So, that's keeping us up to date with what's happening around this. The advisory committee is recommending approval of that article, and that was not subject to a lot of debate. It was actually pretty clear for a lot of the members of the committee as well. So, obviously, you guys all did a good job of explaining that to them. So, Article 5 is another zoning bylaw amendment, habitable floor area, and again, another zoning bylaw amendment by the planning board.
Yes. So, this one actually was, this is more of a zoning board one, but the planning board did recommend to support this. Habitable floor area is not defined currently in our zoning bylaw, and it's something that the zoning board is asked to measure slash make decisions based upon. So, Barney, over at the Chairman of the Zoning Board, drafted this definition to clarify exactly what habitable floor space is so that it will be consistently applied. And this is, I believe, how they already do it, but this way, it's codifying what they're already doing. So, it's recommended that this go ahead and be passed so that we all work off the same definition.
Great. And the advisory committee is recommending approval of Article 5. So, moving on to Article 6, I promise you, this is not going to be all zoning articles. We do have several of them in a row, though. So, we'll go to Article 6, which is the Amendment to Site Plan Exemption in the Fcod.
Sure. So, this is a little bit more of a housekeeping one. We have what's called the Foxborough Center Overlay District. Basically, it's uptown, and there's special zoning for the Fcod, as it's called. And you'll see a map at the handout at town meeting, and in fact, Mike might be able to throw one up with his presentation. Right now, this bylaw would deal primarily with what we're seeing along Central Street. For example, when Foxborough Nutrition, they just opened this weekend, by the way, but when Foxborough Nutrition came in, they were required to get site plan approval from the planning board, even though they weren't changing a single exterior feature. It was just the way the bylaw is written. So, then they would come to the planning board. The planning board would, you know, basically rubber stamp a waiver and go on. This article is proposing that for instances where there's no exterior changes, as determined by the Building Commissioner, then a site plan review would not be required. If the Building Commissioner determines it is required, absolutely, he can require it. But this does give us that flexibility, the bakery going uptown, when Jay Barrows was moving, all of those uses technically required site plan review, which can cost thousands of dollars. And there really is nothing for the planning board to review when you're not changing a single thing outside. So, that's what this article is. And again, the planning board did vote to support this article.
Let's go to Article 7, which is a street acceptance portion of Garrett Spillane Road. This is the one article that the advisory committee did not recommend, and for good reasons. So, I'll let you explain that, Paige.
Yes, so, street acceptances are typically, they're put on when a road's completed, and then at that point is when our DPW goes out and checks, does a punch list to make sure, because we basically are checking that road right up till an hour before town meeting to make sure the town is getting what they signed up to get. In Garrett Spillane instance, after we put it on the town meeting warrant, they went up there and looked at it further and discovered some changes that needed to be made, and it was determined that those could not happen in time for town meeting. So, I believe Chris Gallagher recommended to AdCom to not recommend it. So, this is with the understanding, I think there's some more work to be done up there.
I think there was an issue also with some conservation approvals and recommendations that had not been met fully, and as a result, they needed to be addressed before it could be recommended to the planning board.
That's actually 8 and 9.
8 and 9, okay.
That's what that, so yes. So, bottom line is Article 7 through 8 and 9, we are recommending not, no action be taken.
So, actually, Article 8 is no longer there. We did remove.
Oh, you got rid of it. Okay, sorry.
So, actually, Article 7 is, did not, obviously, pass muster with the DPW Director, and as a result, is not being recommended for approval at this time. So, Article 8 is a zoning bylaw amendment proposed by the Zoning Board of Appeals. It is recommended by the, it was by the advisory committee, and it was recommended unanimously. The purpose of the article is to clarify language regarding the signage application process. The changes then include direction on proper completion and submission of signage application paperwork, along with a clarity to the signage process timelines and designating certain review responsibilities between the zoning, Building Commission and Zoning Board of Appeals. The advisory committee recommended this article, and it will be, and it will give, as it will give the Building Inspector and the Building Commissioner and Zoning Board signage applicants and residents clarity on the signage process in Foxborough. So, in short, this was a clarity of the existing process. There was some confusion amongst applicants, and so this was an opportunity to try and clarify that. I think it should lend itself to be easier for the applicants so that they can get through the signage process a lot quicker. So, this was, again, recommended by the Zoning Board of Appeals, as well as the advisory committee by unanimous vote. So, I'll turn now to Article 9, which is the Fund Qualified OPEB Trust. This was, this was an article which was, which had some discussion at the annual town meeting due to concerns that we were not recommending a funding of the article at that time, and the reason why was because we did not have clarity on how much the town was going to receive with respect to the meals tax that the town collects on an annual basis. As everyone recalls, there was a lot of, a lot of establishments were closed during the COVID crisis, and as a result, the town really only collected about half of what it was normally collects during the meals tax. And so, as a result, we were reluctant to commit to a funding source for that based upon what we didn't know at the time. So, we did come up with a way to fund it, and this was, we're going to use the meals tax money that we did collect, was about a half a million dollars, and we're going to match that with free cash funds to bring it up to the full payment, which is, that along with some payments from the Water and Sewer Reserve Funds, which normally pays into that fund every year as well. And we're going to make our full payment of $1,064,000 this year, and we also, we're looking to do a similar type of arrangement next year, but we do think the funding collections for fiscal '22, which is what we're in right now, will actually be significantly better than it was for fiscal '21. So, that, if we're able to do that, we think we'll be able to be back onto our regular schedule of funding it through the budget process. And in fact, we've already had the discussion about how we're going to fund it in fiscal '23. So, we should be back on schedule as a result of that. So, just to be clear to the listening public, we did not miss the payment. We're just a little bit late with one, and that's only because we weren't clear as to how much we're going to actually collect with the meals tax collections during this past fiscal year, for obvious reasons during the COVID crisis. That recommendation or the action on the Fund Qualified OPEB Trust was recommended unanimously by the advisory committee, and that will be up for consideration at the meeting on next Monday night. Article 10 is another funding piece, small funding piece, that was actually changed the week of town meeting during the annual town meeting of this past, or during this past year, back in May. The funding requirement for that changed by the southeastern Mass, by the sum of $38,954. We opted not to make the change because everything had been, already been recommended and documented at that point. So, we said we would take care of it in the fall, and that's why we're back to collectively with this, with this recommendation at this time, to fund it at the recommended amount of $38,954. So, this, again, this will go, fully fund the southeastern regional school district budget. So, that takes care of Article 10. Again, and that item was recommended by the advisory committee by unanimous vote as well. So, I'm going to turn to Article 11, which is the Sewer District Revision. I'm going to have Mike Johns speak to that issue.
Okay. Article 11 is fairly straightforward. It's an amendment to the Sewer Service Area Map, and this is something that is amended rather often, you know, every couple of town meetings, when there are, when a parcel request or resident request to join the Sewer Service, and it is available to them. There are two addresses that have made this request to the town, and they are 473A South Street and 38 Moore Street. And this has been reviewed by the Sewer and Water Commission, and the Board of Water and Sewer Commissioners have voted unanimously to support this article.
Great. Thank you, Mike. Article 12 is a civil service legislative petition. Just a little bit of background on this. The town of Foxborough has, for a number of years, has remained in civil service going, dating back to the 1940s, if I'm not mistaken, or even earlier than that.
Yeah, 1931.
1931, so thank you. And so, times have changed rather considerably. In fact, the only department that has civil service consideration right now is the police department. It's for the rank and file and sergeants, lieutenants, et cetera. So, we are now at the point where we want to remove that, remove the department from civil service, and there's good reasons for doing that in this day and age where it's very competitive to get officers to serve in the service of the police department. It's become difficult for us to get officers while they're under civil service. It also allows us an opportunity to help diversify the department and provide us more ability to attract, to be more competitive in terms of how we can actually get officers here in Foxborough. I think the town's done a good job. I think the chief has done a terrific job of trying to attract people here, but it's very, become very, very difficult for him, and even his own officers have supported this action because they realize that times have changed, and he'll get into that detail in just a minute. So, I'll turn it now to chief, to the chief to explain that, Chief Michael Grace, who will explain why this action is being requested from the town at this time.
Thanks, Bill. You've covered a lot of it in that opening statement, so I apologize.
Sorry, didn't mean to steal your thunder.
You know, there's a lot of energy behind this, so there's been a lot of discussion. So, this question that's in front of the vote is what I consider an awesome opportunity to increase our hiring and promotion processes to match the 21st century policing. As Bill said, 1931, there isn't a policy probably in the town or anybody operating in a business model that uses a system so archaic, and the police department wants to take us, wants to get to that next level. Civil service primarily conducts the hiring exams and any appeals for promotions or for discipline. I can say that the system clearly has run its course. Many, many communities have left the last several years. These include Sharon, Mansfield, Plainville, Walpole, Norwood, Franklin, North Attleboro. Those are just the communities surrounding us. So, that minus Rentham has kind of put us on a little bit of an island. Benefits to the town, obviously, to make a move like this, we want to be able to increase our ability to hire. We want to be better at our selection process. So, the flexibility in hiring the promotion process will be greatly increased. We no longer would be forced to hire off a state layoff list. And currently under civil service, if we are trying to hire one person, we are only allowed to look at three people on the list. That's it. We can't go any farther. And if anybody is bypassed, then they are entitled to an appeal process, this which could in turn hold up the hiring process for a year or two. We also get to decide how long we want to keep an active exam in place. If we have an exam and we run our own exam, we're not mandated after two years just to abolish that exam. If there's a lot of qualified candidates in the pool, we can, we can keep it a little longer. We can also change the minimum eligibility requirements for the position. So, currently, to be a police officer in Massachusetts, it's age 21, high school diploma. The job itself has changed drastically, and part of the process here is to increase that minimum standard to require a college education or military experience. Our promotion processes are limited under civil service. Now, we can, we can build a process that gauges the officer's abilities. Exams run by the town for hiring will essentially be at no cost. Many companies are out there doing them now all over the state. They just pass on that exam cost to the candidates willing, and the town doesn't have to pay anything. The question is, is how did we get here? This isn't something that just popped up. This is probably an ongoing discussion. I'm going to say probably 15 years in police agencies, but only in the last seven have we really see the trend pick up and take off. This leaving civil service isn't something that you just walk into town meeting, make a, put a article on there and exit. Absolutely cannot. It's subject to collective bargaining, and it's mandated by that. And most importantly, if you were going to leave civil service, you have to have an exit strategy, and you have to have a process in place. So, all of those processes have been developed. The hiring process policy and the promotion process policy has all been created. It's been discussed with the union, and actually, the union supported it with only three people opposing it. So, they too recognize the need of able to get police officers in here at a quicker pace, but also increasing the quality of the candidates. Statewide, policing is challenged. Last summer, I ran out of all the civil service lists. When I say expired, it didn't expire by timeline. I literally, all the Foxborough candidates on the list were exhausted. And essentially, at that point, my only option was, one, go to the state list, or, two, take a lateral transfer. Lateral transfers now, with civil service being removed by so many different towns, are almost nonexistent, and police departments aren't going to sign off on anybody leaving because they're all so short. A non-civil service police department allows Foxborough to look at any police officer anywhere in the state, and we're not bound by the approval of the hiring authority from the community that they're with. And so, it means that campus police officers are fully academy-trained. Surrounding police officers in all these surrounding towns are all able to now apply, and we can have, we could probably be up and running in about four or five weeks if we needed a police officer. So, I do ask that town meeting support this. We have the full support of the Board of Selectmen, the town manager. AdCom voted 8 and 1 in favor of it. The police union supports it, and we look forward to making this change to enhance the quality of candidates hired by the police department to serve the residents of Foxborough.
Thank you, Chief. That was a good summary of, there's a lot of information in this. That was a good summary of, there's a lot of information in this. Though it shouldn't really be looked at as being a very challenging thing for the town. It's actually a very good thing that's going to happen. It's, and the town is evolving, and as its department is evolving, and it's something that has been long overdue and something we've been trying to achieve for a while, but the times have come to full circle, so now everybody is in full support of this action, so it appears. Okay. Moving on to Article Thirteen, I'm going to turn to Mike Johns again for the CIP Committee Bylaw Cleanup.
Okay. Article Thirteen relates to the Capital Improvement Plan Committee, and currently, the five members of the CIP Committee are the town manager, who chairs that, the superintendent of schools, the representative from the advisory committee, a representative from the Board of Selectmen, and the Water and Sewer Commission. And so this article is to, is a little bit of a cleanup, to change the language, to represent the practice that has long been going on and working very well, but we just want to make sure that the language in the code matches the practice that we've been following. So the language is, you know, after the words, "One member of the Board of Water Sewer Commissioners", the change is to insert the words "or their designee." So the DPW director can continue to represent them, you know, on the CIP Committee. And this is supported unanimously by the Board of Water and Sewer Commissioners and unanimously by the AdCom.
Great. Thank you, Mike. So that concludes the review of the warrant process for Monday, November 15th, beginning at 7:30 at the high school, Foxborough High School. So we encourage town residents to attend. We hope that we'll be able to roll through this meeting fairly quickly because there's not a lot of controversy in terms of this warrant, but we certainly, it is the town's business, and it's really important that we can, that we conclude that business that evening. So we do encourage people to attend, and hopefully, you'll be able to join us that evening. And for now, I'd like to thank my panelists here this afternoon for reviewing the warrant with me and to cover all the different pieces of it, and we hope that you'll be able to join us on Monday at 7:30, November 15th, at Foxborough High School. Thanks, and have a great day.